I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting. The first item on our agenda is to approval of minutes from our previous meeting. And after that, as our normal practice to... First regular business item is usually anything that was continued. So we're going to do the continued one first. It's listed on what was issued by the town at starting at 7:03. So whatever we do about the meeting minutes will happen. And then we have to wait till 7:03 to do the continued petition so we don't get in trouble. Got to keep to this something according to the schedule on here. Okay, last meeting. I have a motion on the meeting minutes from last time.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from...
What's the date on that?
March 13, 2025.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I don't... Well, there are only correspondence from Amy on the continued petition. We can deal with that when we get to that thing.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got to give it another couple of minutes here and then we'll take the continued petition. So we can...
Talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, get to that one first.
Again, this is something that we do. We try to finish what we started from the last meeting. It just wasn't written out that way. So we just got to...
Yeah.
Make sure we do it this way.
I know uncomfortable minutes, sweetie.
Always seems like an hour.
Yeah. Well, it appears to be 7:03, at least by my cell phone. So first item we're going to address is the continued petition by property owner Daniel Driscoll for a special permit under section 175-21.h23and5 for open lot storage of registered transport vehicles and trailers. Open lot storage of registered trucks and trailers used for temporary storage and open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with a commercial or industrial use. The property is located at 890 Bedford Street on Assessor's map, 52 lot 68 and 69 in the highway commercial zone. We did not close the public hearing. So anyone who's here who wants to speak about this issue is welcome to. I don't know, Mr. Driscoll, if you want to say anything more or...
Yeah.
And then we'll take any other comments. Give us your name and address, please.
Yep, Dan Driscoll, 18 Linden Place, Whitman, Mass. Just again, I want to discuss that I have a small estate cleanout business and this is all it is. I'm not going to expand. I'm just a little guy trying to make a buck. Last time they said something about a fence was broken. We repaired the fence. It was just a chain link fence. We repaired that and that's about all. We keep the property clean. I barely go there. We go like last month, we probably visited the place three times during the month. And that was in the afternoon. So it's not a full-time business, so.
Is anybody have questions for Mr. Driscoll?
Well, I went by the other day and noticed it was a fence all the way around.
Correct.
Is that new or is that... That's always been there.
We put that up probably last year.
Okay, I just didn't notice.
And the gate's always locked, so.
I noticed that the gate wasn't, yep. And the place looked pretty clean and...
Yeah, that's how it's been for...
And a camper back there, I think?
I have cameras on front and back.
And a camper too, right? Does it camp?
That's a camper. That's my sister's. She keeps it there.
And how many dumpsters are on there right now?
I think four.
And that's what that shows in the plan there, right?
On the plan, I have six, but I only have... Two will be on trucks. So technically four will be on the ground, two on the trucks. I said three trucks. I'm only... I only have two trucks, so.
Okay, we're concerned about the dumpsters and the trucks. Do we want to do the Amy's thing now or want to wait till after?
See if there's any other comments and then we can bring up... We start with the town council and we'll hear about what town council said to us and we'll go from there. I'm going to take some more comments from anybody, just your name and address.
My gikie, 874 Bedford Street. I'm the largest abada of this property and I just want to go over a few things. The petition never mentioned dumpsters. The petition never mentioned containers. And that's what he's going for. He's trying to make this into a transfer station, whether he says it or not. I say it because I've been... I live next to it. I watch it. It's on Route 18. Two roads come down, merge right in front of his house. Okay, so he hasn't done a traffic study, which he should. I've let it... You got a couple of letters from the abadas, out of the abadas than me, that are opposed to this, that he hasn't mentioned. The ID card on the property says residential, residential, residential. It has a two-family house on it, which is residential. Okay, it was a year back. I was in my backyard. Two kids, 10, 12 years old, were inside one of his trucks. I seen him three days later. He says, "Hey, you've seen anybody in my trucks?" I goes, "Yeah, I've seen two kids that live at your property inside the truck." He goes, "Oh," because they would break it into it, he tells me. So that's part of it. I went to the town building department and he says those are containers. That's a dumpster. And that's what he has. This dumpster he needs a permit for, small dumpster. He doesn't have a permit for any of them dumpsters back there. So he's in violation. This is a container. That's a container. Okay, that's closed container. That isn't there. These are pictures. I know I gave you pictures before. This is from 21. Those are propane tanks that he had on the property. This is all paint, thinners. I don't know. I can't get close enough to look at what's in the... What that is. That's chemicals that was on his property in 21. That's tires. Not one, not two, a whole stack of tires. He said he does refrigerators, stoves. Refrigerators have chem... Chemicals too. I don't know if you're aware of that. And that's what the property looked like in 21. And he was told to clean it up. Here's the tires, the televisions. I've been to junkyards before and it's cleaner than this. I got the pictures if you want to see them. This is in 21.
Would you agree right now that it's totally different than it has been?
Still got four dumpsters.
Well, no, I mean all this.
Yeah, he cleaned it up, but it's been cleaned up before. That was cleaned up too.
Okay. Something like that, you should call the fire department.
I did call the fire department. They had him take them out. I did. That's in the fire report too.
Good.
He did clean it up. And then we come to 24. We're back at it again. Pictures of all the contaminants. Here's barrels. I don't know what's in them. I'm not on his property. Here's a salt, a road salter that was two, three feet from my property. My wife said, "Why do we get grubs over there? We don't have grubs." It's from the salt killing my grass in my property. 2024, right back at it. The dumpsters have nothing in it. 2024, dumpsters have plenty in it. 2024, refrigerators, stoves, you name it, it's there. Lawnmower tipped upside down. This is only like 10, 15 feet from my property line. There's a lawnmower tipped upside down. More stuff in the back. More dumpsters with stuff in them. Now, he said empty dumpsters. No, empty dumpsters. They might be empty now. No, they're not empty now, matter of fact. One of them has stuff in it. Dumpsters with stuff in it. 2024, now he did that in 2021. He was told to clean it up. He cleaned it up and then we right back at it. More pictures of all of this crap. This isn't open lot storage.
No.
There's no way. This is a junkyard or it's a transfer station. We'll let you see these too. Dumpster regulations. Supposed to be on hard surface so it doesn't contaminate the properties. Supposed to be a fence, seven... A six-foot fence around the whole perimeter so people don't see that. He hasn't done that. Hard surface, supposed to be pitched away from anybody's property so they don't contaminate other people's property. He had a cease order to not do anything with those dumpsters for three months. Those dumpsters have been going in and out of there. So he doesn't listen to the board. I mean, they building the power and telling them stop doing anything with those dumpsters until it's heard here. No, he's been in and out of there. So it didn't buy by the town. And I think that's all I have.
I do appreciate you.
No permits either.
I do see your frustration.
Well, that's supposed to be permitted, that little dumpster right there by the town. Town regulations, supposed to be permitted.
Did the board of health say anything?
That was a little dumpsters.
Did the board of health say anything?
Board of health said...
Did they come?
I asked the board of health to be here. The town attorney told them not to be here so he could answer your questions. I sent a letter saying I'd like to have the board of health show up at the meeting so he can answer your questions about dumpsters. I have the regulations. Would you like the regulations?
I don't know if we really should because we are not the board of health, but...
Yeah, but they have the regulate town regulations of the dumpsters.
Well, we know that roll-offs in business like that need to have permits. We know that part.
How about the hard surface?
We don't know about this part though.
And the six-foot fence that's supposed to be around the whole area.
What do we have from the board of health on this? They didn't want anything to do with it essentially?
Pretty much they were told not to respond to a request from a resident to appear to the zoning board.
Oh, okay, all right.
In terms of the actual dumpsters themselves.
Terms of the dumpsters themselves, contain, roll-off dumpsters, if they're not food, stuff like that, they don't apply to board of health at all. A food dumpster at a restaurant, grocery store, stuff like that, or apartment complex they're involved with, but...
But are those for the resident or are those for the company?
It's a... I don't know for sure. I mean, it's a two-family, so they're...
They're not for the...
Town barrels, so that's what I would assume.
But if you're doing a construction project at your house and you want to have a dumpster on your property, you've got to pull a permit unless... I mean, you have to pull a permit if it's what, over 30 days?
That's not with the board of health.
Who do you pull the permit with?
It'd be part of your construction permit.
But you can just have permanent dumpsters?
For...
Open on storage?
Permanent long storage means like Dunkin' Donuts, like they have.
Yeah, so that's board of health.
Right, they would need hardtop. They would need...
They would... Every regulation they have. I don't... I don't deal with the board of health regs, but...
But I mean, he showing a dumpster that looks like a trash dump.
Yeah, if that's full of trash, it should absolutely comply with all the board of health regs.
I asked... I see them today and I asked them. He said, "I was advised by council not to show up."
Right, I think it's because you asked them to.
No, no, I didn't ask them to. I sent a letter.
That letter, the public letter, right?
I sent a letter stating that I think the bill... Because you had concerns about dumpsters last meeting.
Yes, I do.
And I sent a letter stating that the building department and the board of health should be at this meeting. So if you have any questions about dumpsters, he could answer them for you.
And obviously the question went to the town attorney and the town attorney said no?
I don't believe it went to the town attorney.
He told me the town...
Not to my knowledge.
He told me the town attorney told him not to show up, not to go.
Well, we don't have anything in writing.
I don't know what the health agent said to him, but...
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come up and speak on this matter? Mind giving us your name and address? I'd appreciate it.
Sean Flaherty, 27 Temple Street. I just am concerned about my view, whether this passes or doesn't. But if it passes, like I said, mobile, put up a nice white fence, lot of greenery so we don't have to see the cow wash. I don't see any of that stuff. If this does get approved, I just want to make sure that there's some kind of blockage so I don't have to look at dumpsters off my back porch. That's all. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Another taker?
You still want them, so.
That's okay. Take your time.
Yeah, apology to 18 Temple Street. My concerns really are the devaluation of property. Nobody wants that next to them. And, you know, we've been here for over 30 years. We've never had any problem with the town. My first time ever being here, actually. And I support my... Because I wouldn't want it next to my house. I presume you guys wouldn't want it next to your house. And if he... Now, he's so supportive. Then put it in his own yard. He lives in Whitman, went all the way, you know? Why, you know, we have enough traffic with two Gs. Now we're going to have, you know, trucks coming in and out. You know, I just... We have enough. You know, I want you... I top the swat, to square you guys, but God, we have enough trouble on that street now. It's not even safe for kids to walk up and down that street with two Gs traffic. They have trucks up and down. At one time, that street was no trucks. Now trailer trucks up and down, they're not supposed to be there. He's only going to add to the congestion. I just, you know, it's just not right for a family neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I would like to turn to the topic of what Amy or town council said about this. If you could read... If you wouldn't mind reading that out loud so that we have that.
Yeah, from her, she said the storage of empty dumpsters seem to fit into the use category. The ZBA can definitely condition the department with screening, hours of operation, parentheses meaning the loading and unloading of the dumpsters, et cetera. That's pretty much it for her guidance.
So my understanding of that is that we can't deny that outright because it fits the commercial purpose, but we can put conditions on it. Is that... Is that how?
No, I mean, we have to, yeah. We have to consider whether it meets the criteria for a special permit.
Yeah, it fits into the use of that. It's still everything normal with any special permit.
It still baffles me that you can store as many construction dumpsters on your property that you want.
Yeah. At this point, we should... If there's no other takers and we've gotten Amy's comments on the record, I think we should maybe move to close the public part of the hearing and then have our deliberation. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Who was voting on this? Do you remember now?
I think the three of you.
Was it?
Andy?
Yeah. Because Andy was out of this one, right? Was he out of this one?
The three of us.
It was the three of us? Okay. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Well, I don't know. My thoughts on this, if we can put conditions on it, it's not going to satisfy all the neighbors. But I think that the main thing is that the storage of stuff either in the dumpster or on the ground there of things that are like could leak onto other people's property, like the upside-down lawnmower or things like that. So a condition that, you know, to me would be you can only store empty dumpsters there and have to put a fence around it so it's shielded from the neighbors.
Well, what I think too is that the neighbors have proven that there's been a problem there.
Yeah.
More than once.
Yeah.
I mean, you can see in this that when you do a house or whatever, you want to take the scrap metal and stuff out.
Yeah.
I mean, it's obvious that there's a pile of scrap metal right there and TVs and stuff. TVs you can't throw in the dumpster anyway. So now that he has a pile of this stuff sitting around in his yard.
Yeah.
That's not, again, that's not construction material. That's junk.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was saying, that should be, you know, have stuff laying on the ground and should have only empty dumpsters if we're going to even consider allowing it.
But also not allow them to have TVs and metal and chemicals and...
Right.
And tanks and turn it into a junkyard because that's... I mean, he's cleaned it up, but still, I agree with the neighbors that with these pictures it's, you know, they're not throwing the stuff in there. They're not throwing the stuff in this yard. This is not construction stuff. This is... This is stuff you can't put in the unloaded a site legally. In other words, you can't go to Braintree and dump some of this, all this stuff here, like TVs and everything into that transport.
Right.
Place. So now he has it on his yacht.
Right, and we don't have to allow that. We could choose to put the condition that he can't have that stuff sitting there. He's going to make his business worth it.
This is where I think that it's more than... It's more than just us on this one. I feel like it's, you know, a lot of other departments that have to make sure this doesn't go on and happen again.
Yeah.
And that's my concern is who's going to enforce these conditions if we put them on there? I don't want it to be the building department because it's not really your, you know, within your purview to go looking around dumpsters to see what's in there.
We can't let it fall in a hole.
And also, I mean, obviously, this is a problem that continues. It's not... Go clean it up, okay? And now it's back to this. Go clean it up again. Okay. Obviously, he doesn't care about the neighbors, really. I mean, you... All you're doing is making a pile here of stuff and leaving it there that you can't dump it in Braintree. I mean, how's that? It's not construction tier.
No.
I mean, we definitely have a... Something that needs to be brought up. I don't know who, maybe the selectmen, I don't know. But we need a... We need some type of code on this.
Yeah, our alternative here is to deny the petition and let it take its course, you know, on the legal front.
But I think with that, I think these pictures should be go with it. I mean, if that did happen.
Yeah.
I mean, you need to show the evidence that he doesn't really care. He cleans up when he has to. That's it.
Yeah.
And he's a small business. I understand. I'm not trying to ruin his small business, but obviously he's not taking care of the neighbor. He's not taking care of the neighbors. The neighbors have to look at this and he doesn't really care, obviously, until he's pushed into the... Into the point where he has to clean it up.
Under the regulations, we have to make a determination whether or not this special permit use will be unduly... Or the neighbors will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare, or if the requested use is desirable to the public convenience or welfare. I don't necessarily consider the storage of trash to be... Meet those criteria. So I mean, I'm fine with the registered transport vehicles, the storage of registered trucks and trailers, but in terms of the open lot storage of materials, essentially the dumpsters, I don't know that that meets a special permit.
It does. It meets a special permit. Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah. But how can you... How can you vote on... But what we have is dumpsters. We have...
But that's what I'm saying. It's three separate special permits. He's requesting relief from three separate uses, so... If you want to do the trailers and trucks for limited purposes, put the conditions on that. But I'm concerned about the dumpsters, even if we condition them to be unfilled. I don't... I don't know who's going to regulate it. It doesn't seem like public health wants anything to do with it and it doesn't... It's not something that zoning's capable or the building department's capable of doing.
What's your thought on that?
Well, you know, I think we... Because there's different sections that he's requesting a special permit for, we could grant a special permit for...
We may, you mean, we may.
We could, should say, with registered vehicles and containers that sit on those vehicles. The other stuff, we can deny open lot storage and any dumpsters being there that are not on the truck. You know, we could do that. I don't know.
Well, then I look at that and go, well, I'm always going to be that person. Okay, I'm sorry. But now they could, you know, buy some more trucks and put all the dumps as they want on them.
Yeah.
So I'm just looking at it that way. I always got to look at it that way. I do... Even a small business, I just think, and I'm not trying to kill a business. I'm not trying to kill a business, but there's no respect at all here for the neighborhood. There is a neighborhood there.
Yep.
And a two-family house right there that he owns. I mean, I mean, I wouldn't want my kids playing around in that scrap right there. We have to do what we have to do, but, I mean, Amy looked at it real quick. It sounded like...
Yeah, I mean... Well, have you got anything? If you don't limit the use of what can be on in the container, and if the container has to be permanent, why isn't it permanent? I mean, if what he says is true, why aren't these permanent? Does the open dumpster container... Container and dumpster is two different things, as pointed out. One's a full wall enclosed with double doors and one has an open top. If the dumpster needs to be permanent, why aren't they permanent? And if they're permanent, then they're unlimited because there's no limit to how many dumpsters you can keep on your property. You just made that statement opening up the conversation. So the only thing he can't do is he can't leave the stuff on his property. If he's doing... If he's collecting stuff from an estate and he's filling the dumpster up, if he wants... Can he store the dumpster on the property that night and then take it away the next day and go do something with it? If he's allowed to do that, but he can't start swapping stuff on the land. He can't start putting trash over here and TVs over here and containers over there. We'd have to limit the structure by which he's able to operate on his property.
But I think this is the problem. The problem is that there's nothing out there saying that.
Only the only thing...
His roll-off dumpsters don't need permits, correct?
No.
His roll-off dumpsters don't need permits.
But when the roll-off dumpster's on the truck full, is he allowed to dump it onto his property full? Can we stipulate that he can't do that? That he has to take it off the property and take it wherever he has to take it to get rid of it? That it can... That he's not allowed to use his land as a swap meet for all of his collectibles? Okay, he's going to get rid of, but he's going to get rid of when it's time to get rid of... Has enough to get rid of it in a dumpster and move it off the property. He can't store anything on his land. Can we set a limitation that he cannot store TVs, propane containers, metals, anything hazardous, gasoline, paints, none of which is allowed to be stored on the physical land of the property in a dumpster? It has to be up in the air in a truck and it has to be gone within 36 hours or 48 hours after collecting it. Is that under our realm to do that?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Because...
I didn't get that clarification from our attorney when we got our feedback.
So basically, what she was saying, basically, that we just need to do conditions of a fence or, you know...
Fence is one thing she said.
Being cleaned up. There wasn't much there that she gave us. I mean...
Yeah, it's just it fits into that use category. Whether it gets allowed or not, it's up to the board. The...
And I'll go back to, I don't want to be the board that says, "Yeah, yeah, okay." Then all of a sudden, another property's bought and all of a sudden they get 15 dumpsters in there, roll-offs.
Right.
Because there's no regulations. There's nothing, there's nothing there.
Well, hmm, would seem if we're kind of unsure of what to do, we'd be better off to possibly, um, deny the petition in its entirety.
Let the board take care of it.
And go to the selectmen and say, we, we need to have this whole filled. It's a regulation that's un, unlisted here for us. We're, we're getting overwhelmed with what are we supposed to do with it?
But there's nothing there that says roll-offs. There's nothing in it that says, um, those separate trailers can be, should be special permitted. I mean, yeah, like the picture was there, the container, it was a, it was a container that was completely covered in a storage. It was a storage container.
Yeah, but that's a
This is a dumpster, open-air dumpster.
But the open-air dumpsters are being offloaded on the property.
Obviously, because it's
Mixed, mixed metals,
Yeah.
TVs, chemicals are all being sorted.
Right.
And eventually he will, will pick it up and, and, and
When the neighbors complain.
When the neighbors complain or when he's ready to, when he has enough of it to get rid of it. You sure can't.
No.
We can't, we can't do that. No, waste one second. I don't want to violate the law here.
Yeah, we, we've closed the public commons. We can't.
It's our turn to talk about it. So, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Apologies.
Okay. Well, we're, we're, we're very, structurally, we're limited to what we're allowed to say and do. What we're allowed to say and do then is to say that if we listen to our, the original attorney's devices, you set a permit to say that because it's allowable, it's could be done. And you set the limitation or you say, no, we're not gonna allow this. And for the reasons that that are appropriate, and the reasons that are appropriate is that based on previous information provided by other members of his neighborhood, he's obviously had issues with the land before and some of the stuff in the land shouldn't be done. And we don't, we're missing a regulation that gives us guidance on what we do here going forward. And we let the town take it from there. And that's the other option we have. Or you set a limitation saying you can, you're only allowed to put, uh, dumpsters on your trucks with, with stuff in them and they can only stay on the property for thirty-six or forty-eight hours and they have to be removed and they only be stored when they're empty.
But who's regulating that? That's another thing.
That's, that's the other Well, the only, the only person who can regulate that is, is, uh, someone who, who, you can't have the building department go up there every other day and look in back, look in the back of the trucks at five o'clock at night to see what's there.
Then that's the only
But the board of health doesn't have that obligation either because it's not a food source.
Exactly.
So we don't have anything in that, in the articles.
We don't have anything that defines, oh, that stuff specifically would affect the local neighborhood in terms of environmental damage leakage.
That's true.
And so we, um, but if we're concerned about that, we could, we could deny it and seek, you know, I don't want to make
Get it to go to court. I mean,
Yeah.
Have the, have the town figure it out because I don't think we should be the board that allows
But we can't, we can't, we can't make regulations on the fly here. I think that would be a problem.
Yeah.
Because people, there's no
All I can do is set limitations.
Right.
All we can do is approve it and set with limitations.
But should we be able to make limitations on open, 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 um, dumpsters, on dumpsters? Construction dumpsters? I don't think we should.
Especially since we have nothing to fall back on.
Exactly.
Right.
It's not like I don't want to figure this out, but personally, I feel
We have nothing in town regulations to fall back on to say we have this or that.
Right.
We don't have anything.
Right. In the absence of that, I don't, I mean, I don't know that we, I mean, that I would vote to approve it without some direction on that.
Mr. Attorney?
What was the question?
Nothing? Anything?
Hmm?
Anything on it?
In terms of?
legality-wise. I mean, we have no, nothing on the town regulation that gives us any guidance here what to do with open-faced dumpsters.
Exactly. Yeah, that, and that's what my position is. And I don't think that the use, I mean, we don't have to grant a special permit if we find that it's not gonna serve the general welfare or it's gonna be hazardous. So.
Or, or, or that we have no way of combating any, any offense that happens because there's no regulation sorting it.
Mm-hmm. And we know, have no ability to enforce it.
Correct.
So we're doing this because we want to explain ourselves, uh,
Yeah.
exactly what we're doing up there. You know, this is why we're talking out loud and bringing this out.
I mean, Amy provided guidance that it could meet the use provisions, but we can also
But it's very vague.
It's up to us to interpret that. So if we want to interpret
There's just too many things
Restrictive than we can.
And there's just too many things to define here. I mean, I don't know what all they collect from house cleanouts when you have to
Everything.
Yeah. So
It's a mixture of everything.
Right. But then somebody has to enforce that and that's the problem. We need, we need something more from the town to provide guidance on how we can set conditions that are enforceable. I just
Not only can we set conditions, who's gonna be the enforcer of those conditions?
Exactly.
I can send you out Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, all right.
Um, I don't
Does anybody want to make a motion here or we, we, what do we want to do?
Yeah, I think we, I think we're at the point where somebody should make a motion and then have a vote on that and then close from there.
All right, I'll make a motion on the, um, on the petition by property owner Daniel Drisco for special permit under 175-21 H-2, 3, and 5, uh, for open lot storage, registered transport vehicles and trailers, open lot storage of registered trucks and trailers used for temporary storage and open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use. I'll move to, uh, grant the special permit with respect to provisions H-2 and H-3 for open lot storage of registered transport vehicles and trailers and open lot storage of registered, registered trucks and trailers for temporary, um, storage, noting that under our definition of trailers, um, the, the use must comply with our definition of trailers as set forth in the bylaws. And I will deny the petition for the open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial use, finding that the storage of dumpsters on the property would be unregulated as it stands under the town's current bylaws and that such use will not be desirable to the public convenience or welfare, um, and may subject the residents to hazards affecting their health, safety, and general welfare based upon the information that's been presented to the board.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. So you will have that in like a week or so?
Sometime next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm sorry. I don't understand.
All right, everything was approved except for the dumpsters.
You can keep the trucks. You can't have the dumpsters.
They can
No dumpsters. Okay?
Well, thank you all for your patience.
Patience, thank you.
The other ones, thank you.
Now you see why we had to get that over with.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so the next item we'll take up is the petition of Richard O'Neill for a finding under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, to construct a one-story addition on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property is located at 302 Rockland Street on Assessor's Map 22, lots 37 and 38, 37 slash 38, in the low-density residential R-40 zone. Can we have somebody come up and speak on this matter? Let us know your name and address and, and tell us about, a bit about your project.
Uh, Richard O'Neill. I live at, uh, 200 Randolph Street, Abington.
I'm sorry, can you hold on a second? I just want to turn the lights on out there that for some reason it's all dark.
Yeah. Good thing you noticed that.
Well, I don't, I'm getting a safe decree. It's the fire department. Thirty years, plus.
Once again, thanks.
That's all right. Uh, Richard O'Neill, uh, 200 Randolph Street, Abington, um, representing my, uh, mom and dad. They're at 302 Rockland and we're just looking to put on a, a single story addition, um, in their, at their house at 302 Rockland Street. Uh, we're looking for a finding, um, not for a variance, we're staying within the setbacks. It has a, uh, master bedroom with a bath.
So you're taking the roof off and making it bigger or?
Uh, tying into the existing roof. No, same, same level, first floor.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. Uh, there's only bedrooms on the second floor, so we're trying to put one on the first floor for them. Uh, and it's gonna go to the right of the existing property. Looking at the house.
So what is the non-conforming amount? Is it size?
The lot size, undersized lot, and then the, um, front setback of the existing home. The addition is fully within the setback.
Typical Abington.
Yeah.
Whoa, this is, this, this is even crazier to Let me see.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's the last one we're on.
This is the last one? Yep.
There it is.
Thank you.
Looks like we're gonna keep the same, um, architectural style of the existing home.
Yep.
Because it was redone some years ago. Yes, I looked at that property at one, not, I didn't go inside. I looked at it one time. I liked what they did with the place.
Oh, it looks nice. The asphalt. Yeah.
Yeah.
You just have a full basement?
Uh, full basement. Yep.
Separate utilities or joint utilities in the whole property?
Uh, joint for the hall. It's a single family.
This isn't a separate unit.
Yeah.
They're just adding the first
No, it's a one-bedroom, first floor.
To get a first-floor bedroom to avoid stairs.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Very basic. I don't have any questions for him.
So you look for finding, okay.
Yep. So pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration may be permitted unless there's a finding by the special permit granting authority, um, that the change, extension, or alteration shall not substantially, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use of the neighborhood. So
So this allows us to be, continue to be non-conforming?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just can't be substantially more detrimental.
Thank you.
Which I'm not seeing from anything that's here. Looks good.
Uh, who's voting on it, sir?
Um, I would think that the three of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just want to announce.
Yeah.
Normal, yeah. The normal ones.
I just want to clarify. You're always clarifying. It's a crazy lot, huh?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Absolutely insane.
Strange how they build these houses crooked.
Well, a lot of, a lot of land and they slap that right, right in the middle of it.
Right.
Must be, I didn't look at the things, how old the house is, but it's been there.
Not as old as you, but it's old.
Nice. Do you think it's, uh, 91, 1891?
Isn't that your mother?
Yeah.
Mom and dad.
Um, do we have any further questions for him?
No.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak on this matter? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to close the
Motion to close the open?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I, I don't see any reason not to grant this because
That's, that's crazy lots and
Yeah.
It isn't asking too much.
Right. And the, the new, the addition would, would meet the setback requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in, they're gonna move the existing house.
Right. Well, you're gonna move it too.
Yeah.
To make it more non-conforming?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're not trying to make the lot smaller, which is the main non-conformity. So
And the lot's, just the lot, so.
The lot is what it is.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Uh, the petition for Richard O'Neill for the finding of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 6, to construct a one-story addition in a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The property is located at 302 Rockland Street on Assessor's Map 22, lots 37 slash 38, in the low-density residential R-40 zone. A motion that we approve the finding.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, wish
Good luck with it.
You'll get something this week from
From the building department?
Yeah.
Best of luck. Take care.
Take care.
And thank you again for your patience. Other matters, just a substantial challenge. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Um, and then the, um, final item on our agenda.
One more time.
Fifteen Jameson.
Oh, Mark, where did I, where did I put that?
Fifteen Jameson.
Uh, no, I wanted to read the
Here, right here.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to read.
I mean, right.
Yeah. The petition of Mark Bell for a variance under Section 175-29 for a side yard setback from 5.5 feet to 5.2 feet and a finding for Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, to construct a one-story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located at 15 Jameson Street on Assessor's Map 63, Lot 51, in the medium-density residential R-30 zone. Someone would come up and give us your name and address.
Come on down.
And tell us about your project.
Mark Bell, 15 Jameson Street. Uh, looking to expand my kitchen. Eight feet.
She has to be here.
Well, I'm gonna be doing the cooking.
Sure. That's what they all say. I know, I know.
Well, I stopped cooking because the kitchen's only a galley kitchen.
Oh.
I need a big kitchen.
It's only one at a time can be in the kitchen.
Correct, correct.
It ain't gonna be you.
No. She's a good cook too, so. So I'm looking to expand the kitchen and do, uh, and also the dining room, which will become the den, is gonna go out three feet also. So it's basically eight by 30. And then the deck, the existing deck will be put right back on the house. It's 16 by 12, oh, by 16 deck.
Do you have any, um, anything made up showing what you're doing, like
As built?
As built?
Uh, like that? No, I do not. I just have what the, uh, surveyor gave me, but I think you guys all have copies of it. That's the, uh, yep.
The plot plan?
Yes, the plot plan.
And the petition said that there wouldn't be any, the only change to the setback would, you know, there's a non-conforming setback now and it would make it slightly less conforming yet, but only by, you know, 0.3 feet.
Yeah, the, this could, I believe at the board's discretion, all fall under finding. But if the board didn't want to grant that as a finding, I didn't want to have to come back. So I told me you should probably put variance on there as well. But the 5.5, 5.2, I certainly think could be just done as a finding as well.
Yeah, but, but this, that's the only thing that why he's here at all.
Again, pre-existing non-conforming
Yeah.
Lot area width, frontage, front setback, side setback, and then slightly changing that side setback.
So it's only eight feet by 30?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes. The corner, the, the corner that is moving from 5.5
Five.
Five to 5.2
Right.
is the corner of the house.
Okay.
Where I have a walkway.
It's usually that we like to see these, um, plans like this.
Right.
But we, you're not gonna be changing the outside, anything different, anything making it, you know?
No, it's one level, no basement.
Nothing crazy. Okay.
Nothing crazy. It's just gonna be overhung.
Okay.
And the rear foam too.
Yeah. Because we like to see plans.
Yep.
Yeah. But it is a small
Yeah.
Recommendation that whoever makes the approval, we make it look, uh, state something in the fi, in the finding that it looks like the property that exists currently.
Yeah, it has this.
That has this.
Right.
Because we don't have that design plan. Are you planning on putting a full basement on this?
No.
You gonna put it on piers?
Yes.
Slab?
I'm gonna, no, it's gonna be on piers. It's gonna have the um, the pylons that you screw in.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's gonna be those air-screwed in with the post coming up. It's gonna be extended, it's gonna be all, what do you call it, on the bottom of the joists, it's all gonna be the plywood. It's all gonna be weather-tight. And then, and then it's gonna be spray-foamed.
Are you doing it yourself?
Uh, no, I'm doing the plumbing, I'm a plumber.
Okay.
So, my friend owns a company, a construction company, CEG Construction out of Wayman.
Okay.
He's, his guys are gonna work for me.
Okay.
Excuse me, what is this?
Or, or is it?
What's what? What is this? Is that an easement?
That might be an easement.
Is there an easement on that side of the property? Is somebody ever ready to utilize the access to property line on the, on the.
No.
Fosh side of the property?
I believe that dotted line is pinning the rear setback.
Okay.
To the two corners of the home.
Oh, okay.
We just wanna make sure that we, we aren't infringing on anything like that.
Because we just passed a new regulation about that.
Oh, I don't think it went through.
The ten footer? If you can't go within ten feet?
That, that did not pass it.
That did not pass?
No.
How did I miss that? It was there, I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I just didn't want to violate that, that's why I was worried.
Yeah. Usually they'll, they'll put on what they.
Not only this, it's what these.
So just looking at that line, that's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
This is typical Jameson.
Yeah, no, no argument.
Where else? Where, X Room Circle, that's where I used to live when I was a kid, so, I know that place very well, yep.
One other question, the roof line of the addition you're putting on?
Yes.
Are you gonna meet the side of the house, or the roof above the?
It's gonna go from, the roof is gonna go from the peak, right now.
All the way down?
Yes, all the way down. It's gonna be a cathedral ceiling.
Okay.
In the kitchen.
Beautiful, wow.
Structured, I have no problem.
Yeah. That's what you gotta do with that little crazy-looking piece of land.
Man, they cut these lots up so weird. Haven't stopped.
You ought to see X Room Circle.
Um, do we have any further questions for him?
I do not.
I don't either. Um, I would entertain a motion. I don't know if she wants to come up and say anything.
It's all on him, don't get me wrong, it's all on him. If he doesn't get his snake home, I don't wanna be him to be.
She'll say, she'll say let him do it so he can start cooking instead of her.
Dream on, dream on.
I used to cook a lot.
Yes.
I used to have a bigger kitchen.
Yeah, so.
Oh, it's all about size now, is it?
Oh, it is.
Forty-inch burger, I can't cook, a thirty-six-inch doesn't work for me. Only electric, I need gas.
I'm sorry, this is the first night they let him out.
It's been three months.
That's alright.
Have you started to make a motion, I think, if you could, if you could repeat that.
I don't wanna make that motion anymore. I decided I'm going ahead and motion of motion.
Well, the motion.
We ought to do a finding or a variance.
Well, but. Most of the public thing first, and then.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, now let's go on to the, how do we do this?
It's a, it's a typical, it's a typical Abington setback, and it's not, it's not.
Overhearing or anything.
And it's gonna keep it in, again, the only thing I, I. I run this from Amy Durbin, is that we just wanna say something about, because we did not see any building, quote-unquote. We need to say something about, in our decision, that it has to maintain the same structural standby of the existing structure, or something like that.
Architectural style.
Architectural style, or something like that.
Yeah.
I think that's most appropriate, just so we, we know we're following within the structure of the house that's already there. And the new structure won't look totally different.
Right. I don't wanna pry too much, but are you taking out any form of loan for this, which is so we can figure out, because sometimes a bank will look to see if you be, have the finding as well as a variance, so.
Yeah.
If you're gonna do any type of financing. What's that?
We already took out an equity loan.
Okay.
We already have the money.
Okay, okay.
So.